Good afternoon, everyone. We'd like to welcome everyone to the Tarrant County College District Board of Trustees meeting for November the 18th of 2021. Give me a second here. So we're going to call the meeting to order, and then we have some public comments here. So the first person that we'll call up, let's see, there's Rich Diott, please, Mr. Diott.
Good evening, trustees. My name is Rich Diott. I currently serve on the Tarrant County Appraisal District Board of Directors. Before I begin, I want to make it very clear, I'm speaking as a private citizen tonight, and I'm not speaking on behalf of the board, or TAD, or anything like that. I've served for the last two years as something of a reformer, and I want to ask you to give your votes tonight to Gary Lasada. He has been on the board with me for a couple of years. The work that he has done has been incredible, and he has been pushing for good changes the whole time. And so the reason this is important is because the TAD board, when I ran a couple of years ago, I was in front of dioceses. I'm a civil engineer, so I spend a lot of time in front of city councils and school boards, and these people were all saying, if I heard this once, I heard it 100 times, "TAD is out of control." And what that means is, basically, TAD doesn't raise or lower taxes, but they determine valuations, and a lot of your constituents and my constituents believe the process isn't fair. Homeowner A does not have confidence that they're being treated fairly with homeowner B. And Gary Lasada on this board has done a really good job of making good changes, and I'll just give you one, and I'm going to ask quickly, I don't see a clock. Okay, I'm sorry for that, didn't want to go over. So, one of the changes, I imagine you all have a limit as to what can be spent on your behalf without your approval. There were line items in TAD's budget before that were in the millions of dollars that now they have to get approval for anything over $50,000. Most taxing units have something like that, but until just a few months ago, TAD didn't have that. That was a reform that was initiated by Gary Lasada, and he's done such a good job. He's persuasive, he's inquisitive, he asks lots of the right questions, and so I'm really asking you to vote for him tonight. If you gave me some votes, I'd be very happy with that, but I think Gary deserves your votes tonight. He's standing up for the taxpayer, he's standing up for the taxing units as well, and really looking out for everybody's interest. So I want to ask you to give your votes tonight to Gary Lasada. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Diott. Next speaker is Pat Jacob.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Pat Jacob. I am the mayor of Lakeside. I have been the mayor since 2007. The address is 9830 Mary Jane Lane, Lakeside, Texas, 76108. And I am here also to speak about the TAD Board of Directors and the election that's currently ongoing. This election happens every two years, as you're well aware of, and it, there's a lot of candidates that get put up in there, you've got some returning candidates that come back, and what I want to talk to you about is my observations as a concerned citizen and as a mayor of a town, what I've seen going on at the board and the work that's been done. Okay? The, first off, has everybody seen the resumes for all the candidates this year? Okay. There are some entities that resumes have not been circulated, and everybody hasn't had a chance to read them. But what I wanted to do is echo Mr. Diott's statement about work ethic. The work ethic by Mr. Diott and Mr. Lasada has been refreshing. They don't just come to the meeting to sit there and look at it, look at it and participate and grab a cup of coffee, not like some of the prior boards did. I'll just, and I will say it like it is. An example that I'll give you is Mr. Diott went and did a study prior to being elected to the board on why Tarrant County has the highest protest rate of any county in the state. We're not the largest county, but we had the highest protest rate. He went down and testified before one of the Senate committees chaired by Senator Nelson, and there were a lot of questions and things. Nothing really happened as a result of his going down and testifying. However, a little bit later, I asked Senator Nelson, in regards to that testimony, what she felt about that. Net result, she sent a letter to the Tarrant Appraisal District asking for an audit of the KAMA system. And KAMA system is the mass computer appraisal system that Tarrant Appraisal District uses. I'm not going to go sidetrack onto that, we could spend an hour talking about that one. But that letter went in, the board took it, got it, reviewed it, and voted three to two to go ahead and approve the audit. Shortly after that, we had two board members ask for a recall. Basically, they resigned, but the rules are different in the state of Texas than the tax code for how you deal with a resignation versus a recall. And there hasn't been a recall in the state of Texas since the tax legislation was put into law in 1967. Tarrant County got two in one year, last year. At that point in time, there were three members left on the board. They, one of the people that resigned was the chair. The three members, two of the three members asked to have an election to go back and select a new chair. I took it upon myself to poll all the entities, including Tarrant County College, to get an opinion as to what we as entities would think, and I copied everybody that was involved with it. Over 90% said, "Let's have the election." The acting board chair at the time, who was a secretary of the board, said, "No, we're not going to. I'm going to continue to run it until we replace the other two members." We had a discussion at depth about that, and it went ahead and stayed that way to the end of the year, and then she was reappointed back as chair again for this year.
Mr. Jacob, thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome.
I appreciate your coming.
But I do echo Mr. Diott's sentiment.
Thank you. Next speaker is Carl Roniker.
I'm going to set my clock so I don't go over.
Okay, thank you.
Don't want to do that. My name is Carl Roniker. I worked for Tarrant County College for 10 years. I worked seven years in the Human Resources Department at the college under Dr. Ricardo Coronado, who was an incredibly ethical and fair manager. Through his leadership, we were able to endow a scholarship, which is the whole purpose of Tarrant County College. Gets to the base of our mission statement, to provide affordable, open access to quality teaching and learning. And then the chancellor, I guess, decided, well, he needs to make a switch, so he brought in a new person in HR to over, to take over HR, and I want to read some names to you. I want to read the resignations since this new person has started. Okay, Cherie Keplinger, Clarissa Walker, Carl Roniker, Tiffany Gant, Megan Mills, Tabitha Hall, Ashley De La Rosa, Stephen Martinez, Kyra Bruno, Jennifer Bastelios, and even people that the new executive director of HR hired have left. These people are Veronica Allen, Lori Ward, Judith Dumont, and you can't sit here and tell me that this is not, this turnover rate within this department is not harming our district as a whole, is not harming our students. On March 22nd, when I was walking through the office at MOC, and I saw, I'm running, I got a minute left, so I got to really roll on this, I saw this huge computer in Gloria's office, so I, when I retired, obviously couldn't do it when I still worked for the college, and I asked her, "How much did that monitor cost?" In open record, Susan Alanis told me $1,300 where the average employee of Tarrant County College, their monitors are $400. You can't tell me that that's not wasting taxpayer money. It's wasting taxpayer money. On August 2nd, I inquired with Susan Alanis about my concern for the turnover rate in HR. I was told, "Thank you for your concern." I got to admit, it was very speedily, she was able to tell me that within two hours. The evidence of the Chronicle of Great Colleges, we've always been highly ranked in HR, but I hate, I hate to see what it is now, and I guess my time's up, so I'll come back next time.
Thank you, Mr. Roniker. Okay. No further public comment, Mr. Gates? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll go ahead and proceed with the meeting. We have Board Business, item three. We'll start with the approval of October 21st, 2021 Work Session Minutes. Any questions or comments on those? Otherwise, I just need a motion.
I move approval.
Move approval by Mr. Barr. Second, was that Mr. Hornsby? Okay, second by Mr. Hornsby. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. All right, we'll go on to item 3B, Approval of October 28th, 2021 Board of Trustees Meeting Minutes. Any questions or comments?
Move to approve.
Move to approve from Mr. Kind. Second by Ms. Wood. Okay. We've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We'll go on to trustee remarks. We'll start over with Mr. Hornsby today, if that's okay. Mr. Hornsby, you want to share about your experience over at, I think, yes? I'm sorry. Did I miss that? I'm sorry. We'll go on to 3C. Thank you, Ms. Bracken. Consideration of Approval of Resolution, Authorizing the Casting of Tarrant County College District's Allocated Votes to Candidates for Appointment to the Tarrant Appraisal District Board of Directors. Ms. Carol Bracken, thank you for that, I'm sorry.
Not a problem.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam President, Trustees, Chancellor Giavignini. We are here this evening, you've been provided information with regard to the Tarrant Appraisal District election. As you know, the college has 290 votes that can be either given to one candidate or a portion. You've been provided with the names of the nominees and their backgrounds. At this time, it's appropriate for the board to make a determination of how they want those votes to be cast. At that point, we will fill out the ballot that's been provided, and we'll also ask you to adopt a resolution to that effect.
All right, Ms. Bracken, yes, does somebody, anyone have any questions or comments? Yes.
I'd like to.
Mr. Barr?
Discuss it.
Okay, certainly.
I'm very impressed with the fact that a significant number of people, some people that have done a lot of work in the community, have been nominated and proposed for election to the TAD Board, and after some discussion and investigation, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution and allocate our votes with 136 votes to Jungus Jordan. Mr. Jordan is a longtime former city council member and a very competent public servant, and that we, 136 votes to Mr. Jordan and 154 votes to Kathryn Wildmon. Ms. Wildmon is a former, longtime member of the Arlington City Council, and she currently chairs the TAD Board. So I make a motion that we award our 290 votes, 136 from Mr. Jordan, and 154 from Ms. Wildmon.
Okay, second. We have a motion and a second.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Didn't, didn't we talk about this on last time about Ms. Wildmon getting all the votes from the other?
Ms. Wildmon did receive all of the votes that were given from Tarrant County, and only the six largest taxing authorities have to vote in their first or second meeting after the ballot was issued on October the 30th. The rest of the taxing authorities don't have to vote until December the 15th, and several, actually quite a few of them have not yet voted. So to date, right now, she has 515 votes.
How many votes does she have to get on the board?
You know, that just depends. In the past, it's taken around 700 to get on the board. However, you know, every election's different, the top five vote-getters are on the board. If the, if the voting is clustered around a small number of candidates, it takes more. If the devoting is more diffused, it can take less. So it's not like there's a set number.
Okay, because when we talked about this, I thought we were voting for five positions.
No, there are five positions open, and you can vote for one person, or you can split up the vote among others.
And I'll be able to do that when I vote, or do I have to vote as a group?
The vote, the group, the board casts a vote.
So right now, Ms. Bracken, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Barr made the motion, and then we have a second for Mr. Kind. So we would vote on that.
Yes.
And if there's, okay.
Unless there's a substitute motion.
Right. Unless there's a substitute motion.
A board member can make a substitute motion if they choose to allocate votes to a person other than the two persons that, Mr. Barr included in his motion.
Right. But there's a motion and a second, so we need to vote on that first, and then, okay, all right. So there's been a-
If you have a substitute motion, you would have to vote on the substitute motion first, and then vote on the main motion.
That's correct.
Correct, okay.
So do I do that now, or do I wait?
If you want to-
I want- If you want to, you want to make a substitute motion, okay. So we have a motion and a second, and now we have a substitute motion.
Which requires a second.
Which requires a, so go ahead and go with your-
What is the second? What is the motion?
She hasn't made it yet, I don't think.
I would like to give at least a portion, 136, to Gary Lasada.
Okay, so we have a motion, substitute motion to allocate 136 votes to Gary Lasada, and that's it? What, okay, all right. So we have a motion and a second, we have a substitute motion to allocate 136 votes to Gary Lasada. That still leaves us with the balance, so what?
150.
150, right.
We need a second.
154.
Right, so we'll need a second to that substitute motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, you're going to second the motion? Okay. Dr. Morrison is seconding the substitute motion. So we vote on the second motion, the substitute motion first. So we have a motion and a second for 136 allocated to Gary Lasada. So all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, so there's two. Any nays?
Nay.
Okay, we've got a nays, we've got three, four nays, okay. So the motion did not carry. So we go back to the original motion of 136 allocated to Jungus Jordan and 154 allocated to Kathryn. We have a motion and a second, so all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
One, two, three, four. Did you, Mr. Hornsby, did you? Okay, so I think that's five. And then, any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so we've got two, and so the motion carries. So we have 136 votes that we're allocating to Jungus Jordan, 154 to Kathryn Wildmon, and that was also part of that, was that we approved the resolution.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, we state.
The board has decided to cast 136 votes for Mr. Jordan, 154 for Ms. Wildmon. We'll complete the ballot to that effect, and I'll present the resolution supporting the ballot to Ms. Ayala for her execution and, as president, and Ms. De Kind in her capacity as secretary. We will then forward that to the Tarrant Appraisal District tomorrow. We will be notified, the voting ends on December the 15th. The winner will be, winners, I should say, will be announced sometime between then and December the 31st, and the successful five candidates will then begin a two-year term on that board beginning on January 1st, 2021.
Thank you, Ms. Bracken. All right, we'll go on to 3D, trustee remarks. Mr. Hornsby, would you like to share? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
President Ayala and Chancellor. I caught myself trying to send in some pictures the other day, but I don't know if they did, if they got them. And when they bring them up, I see which one comes up first, because I did a kind of, this is a picture of, from Tarrant County College, 22 Rivers Campus Veteran State Program in which I was blessed to be able to be the speaker on that day. Sure do want to thank Dr. Sean and Dr. Turner for inviting me and helping me to be there. Dr. Madison and Dr. Turner sure hosted us well. Had a great time, a great group of veterans were there, and was able to relive some of my military experiences and talk about those, and so we had a great time there on that day. Those are constant, 10-year pictures, that's that young lady in the dress at the table, it says Lieutenant Colonel in the reserves at Carlswell now. She's still out in the reserve unit, in the medical unit there, and she was the one that introduced me, so it's blessed to be, and the gentleman sitting to my right sang the Star Spangled Banner. You did an awesome job doing that. Of course, you know, President Madison. Also had the opportunity of attending, let me see what comes up next, maybe nothing else. But I went to the mayor's international dinner, which was really awesome, and there's a picture of Mr. Barr, as he was helping to give out awards, and over that section, he's the chairman of that part of the committee. It was an interesting evening, I've never been. I'd never been, but just to be a part of that and to see the many different countries that are represented, and how they incorporated people from those countries into that event that night. It was a great night of, room full of people, a lot of people. And it was just such a festive atmosphere, and the people seemed to really enjoy doing what they were doing, and I really appreciated being there. Thank, thank the college for letting us have this opportunity to be there, being a sponsor for that, as they always are in part of everything that the city of Fort Worth does. They're really good partners with the city in their events. I appreciated that. And then the last thing was the visit that I had to Southeast Campus. And the thing that struck me the most, thank Dr. Coppola for taking us around, was I got to go to the culinary department. You can tell I like to eat. So that was really important for me to go there, meet the chef, and to talk about their, where they're going to be in the new, when the expansion comes, and that new space that they're going to have, and how much more they're going to be able to do, more people they're going to be able to train, and more opportunities for the community to be able to come in and experience the culinary department and the students that are preparing to go out and serve. And that's going to really be a great thing. They also have, I found out they have a mixology class, so if you really want to learn how to mix drinks, for yourself or for others, maybe something that you want to, want to go in and, and take part in, because they look like they really have fun learning how to do that. And I thought it was interesting how it started. They said, because Texas Live came to them and asked, said, "We need 200 and some odd bartenders, and we don't have a place for them to train." So they, the program was developed from the need from the community, and the college responded to a community need, and so that's really what we're about, and we appreciated the opportunity to see that and be a part of that. Thank you, President.
Thank you very much. That's a very good report, and thank you for representing at the Veterans Event as well, so. Mr. Rainhill?
I attended two events.
Yes.
Excuse me. I attended two events this, last, this month. I attended the 41st Annual National Philanthropy Day Awards Luncheon on November the 9th, and there's a picture of a bunch of people who, who, who attended at the invitation of Kristen Bennett, our Executive Vice President of Advancement, and Fred Schmidt, our Director of Development and Corporate Industry Partnerships. And he is a member of the Board of the Association of Fundraising Professionals that put on the event. Our friend, I don't know if we can see, there's Conrad and Betty Heed sitting in, at Table 25. It was good to get together with all of them as well. Dr. Zalva and Adrian LeBanc were honored at the event as outstanding philanthropists in 2021. Congratulations. And I was honored to get another lapel pin from the foundation. It says TCC, I've forgotten, why can't you see what it says? Certain, TCC Certain. It, it was a pin that was given to people for, employees in regard to the employee campaign to donate to the foundation, and I was very happy to get that. I also went to the kickoff luncheon. It was the, what was called the Pay Off What You Can Kickoff Luncheon at the Trinity Campus in connection with the week-long National Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week, which is a, you, you could not have missed all of the plaques along the wall, the walls coming into this meeting about Hunger Week. I'd like to congratulate what was called the Can Construction. Trinity Rivers Construction was constructed by Professor of Art, Mr. Angel Fernandez, and his arts 1301 students. Those are the cans that you saw out there, and it's an amazing complex. Look at that. I don't know how they did it, but it's a pay what you can, an amazing display. But as you walk down the corridor, you would see the different events that, all week, they had, different events to talk about different aspects of homelessness. Uh-oh, there, there I am talking on. Anyway, it was a marvelous event, and I'd like to say a few words just about it. The, I think the whole transact, the whole deal was put together by Dr. Julie Amnon, Vice President of Development and Services here at our campus. The luncheon had a panel of staff and community partners that discussed the impact of hunger and homelessness in our community and within our student population. The panelists were Julie, Julie Rebutner, President and Chief Executive Officer of the Tarrant County Area Food Bank, Hesi Herrera, the founder and executive director of what's called COACT, which is an organization, the goal of which is to help grassroots efforts and community organization and nonprofits to meet social challenges. Lorraine King, Executive Director of the Town, Tarrant County Homeless Coalition, and Shannon Leonard, Program Manager, Stay the Course of Catholic Charities. We, we are a partner in this, in the Stay the Course. And Olivera Rettis Tera, Consultant and Institutional Coach to the Hope Center College Community, and just Associate Professor of Professional Practice at TCU. On behalf of the trustees and on behalf of the college, I want to congratulate and give our gratitude to the, to the staff and to the President of our Trinity College Campus for putting on this awesome event. Thank you.
Thank you for those reports. We appreciate that. Dr. Morrison?
Thank you, Madam President. It was my pleasure last Friday to attend the dedication of the redevelopment for the Northeast Campus, Northwest, sorry. Northwest Campus, the bicentennial campus, the only bicentennial campus in the United States. And as I said to them, you know, I was there in April 1976, and the Chancellor pointed out that, that I, probably along with Joe Rhodey, were possibly the only two people who were there that had also experienced that other event. It was very delightful, well-done, did a great job of highlighting student performers in terms of the band, the singer, and the speaker. I'm so excited. I asked the Chancellor to promise me he was going to get it done before my term ends. He said he couldn't promise me that, but I could promise him that I would stay until it was done. So we didn't need, neither of us made promises, but it was great. I was happy to be there and looking forward to what will be, again, a beautiful campus. So also, there's lots of work that has been done, more being done. I just can't imagine how they're having classes in the midst of all that. So faculty, staff, president, everybody has to be congratulated for carrying on in the midst of all of this. So thank you. And today, we celebrated the 10th anniversary of the Intergenerational Community Conversation, which we were hosted by the third president. We began, and it was a great event. Always, I am amazed by our students. That is always the highlight. Of course, our board president is a former TCC student. She's a rising star in her own right. This young man that you see there is a drama. He was in the audience, and we had a drum circle at the beginning, which is to get everybody in rhythm. It was led by two professors. That's Dr. Brown, a psychology professor on South Campus, and also Dr. Tina Jenkins, who's a Director of the Visions Unlimited Program at South, led that. And it was great, got everybody relaxed and in the groove, and that was exciting. We also had wonderful panelists there. That's Dr. Erin. She and her team worked very hard. The whole district, this was one example of one college, because there were a lot of people who had to come together to work to make it happen, all the different departments. And, and it was, it was great. A former student, Chancellor McCarthy, who is now, former graduate, a graduate who is now a student at UTA, pretty much gave us all some really solid advice, and it was wonderful. We had, that's my son Jonathan to the left. He intellectualized my concept 11 years ago and has been leading that charge for me. Does a lot of the heavy lifting, meeting with people, trying to put my one-liners into an intellectual setting. And it really tickled me today because all of the college people who came up to speak, they didn't just, you know, do their part, they had to give us the lesson. So that's, shows that we were teaching as we were learning and enjoying. It was, it was delightful. My friend, the mayor of Forest Hill came, she is the three-time mayor of Forest Hill. So Tarrant County has two things. We have the youngest mayor in the country. I think we might also have the oldest mayor in the country, because Clara graduated from high school in 1961, and she brought as a surprise, an office from the Office of Mayor, a congratulatory proclamation, just congratulating us on celebrating 10 years of meaningful community engagement through the Intergenerational Community Conversation. So thank you. And the Chancellor gave me the ultimate compliment. He said it was the best one he has participated in. And thank you, Chancellor, for coming and staying and being with us, participating with us. And I'm going to have to see if I can get you these cards, because we have all of the themes on the back of, over the 12, 10 years, and it'll give you and your family some talking material, other than football, to talk about during the Thanksgiving holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Morrison. It was a very nice event. Mr. Barr?
Well, I was going to talk about the Mayor's International Dinner, and Mr. Hornsby stole my thunder, so.
Oh, I did, you showed your picture.
Well, I've been involved with the Sister Cities Organization for about 25 years or so, and the, the main reasons I've been involved is the opportunities to travel, to go to other parts of the world for young people here in Tarrant County. And it's a great program, and I've had the privilege to visit most of our sister cities. But we honored, on, on last week, on Thursday night, we honored the Kimball Art Museum, the UNT Health Science Center, and Miguel Harth Bedoya, the former conductor of the Fort Worth Symphony, all for what they've done to promote internationalism in Fort Worth and Tarrant County and build international relationships. This is a picture of Miguel along with Becky Renfro Bola and Mayor Parker, as we made the presentations. And there's one other thing I want to acknowledge tonight, it's with a heavy heart, that David Chapel, my good friend and longtime Fort Worth City Council member, a guy who's been involved in this community in so many different ways, passed away just shortly after we started this meeting a few minutes ago. David's a good friend, good guy, has contributed greatly to this community, and he will be missed.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. Our condolences as well.
Mike?
Yes, sir. Mr. Kine?
I'm sorry for your loss, Mr. Barr. Let's see what we have up there. Well, Mr. Hornsby beat me to the punch, but I brought pictures.
I knew you would.
Thank you to President Coppola and the faculty and staff at the TCC Southeast Campus. Mr. Hornsby and I were able to visit on the 29th, and we were able to see so many of the really special components of this campus. And I can't remember who I shared this with, but I can actually remember a time before a Southeast Campus. I was back home in Arlington, taking a summer school class in astronomy, I think it was, and they used to take the astronomy students out to the vacant field that would become the Southeast Campus, because there was no light pollution out there. There were only cows and stars.
Oh.
So I can remember being in those fields very well. So we've come full circle. We enjoyed a tour of the campus, to include here at the Veterans Resource Center, and a beautiful recognition of the veterans who attend classes at the campus, as well as faculty and staff, as a part of their Wall of Honor, so that was neat for us to be able to see. See what's on the next slide. We were also able to see the transformed learning spaces in action. So this is just one of many examples, where you could see the modular furniture, the cameras and displays, and really a 360 view. We even walked in on some various groups that had fully utilized almost every space of writing area as they were studying and collaborating, so that was nice to see. We visited the Math Resource Center, where they were having a lot of fun. It was the kind of place that made you want to go get help with math, so that was exciting. To Mr. Hornsby's point, we spent a good deal of time in the culinary arts area, and I think that Mr. Hornsby and I have decided to take that mixology class together. I mean, that's the word. But they were very impressive, and we were able to meet with just some of the most outstanding staff of the program. We were able to meet some of the second-year program students who were setting up for an event, an adjacent classroom there, so that was really good to see them in action, preparing for, I think it was, a Monday meal. So good, tasty things happening at the Southeast Campus. And then we were able to visit the food pantry, which, I didn't even get a full shot of everything that's available there, but the shelves had recently been restocked. We learned about the need for the food pantry from the students who attend there, and I thought it was really interesting in that I was able to meet a friend of a friend, who is Carla Hernandez. She's the coordinator of the TCC Southeast Food Pantry, who I met, because she has been instrumental in partnering with some of our faith community in Arlington to set up, I've got a flyer right here for one event in particular, a holiday event that will benefit the Southeast Campus, so different attendees can come and enjoy holiday music, bring cans or non-perishable food items, and those will all go back to the TCC Southeast Campus Food Pantry. So thank you again for the opportunity to visit your campus. I think maybe one more slide? That's it?
Did you also attend a Veterans Event as well? Yes, didn't you?
I left our work session on last Thursday, so that I could go present at an AISD Veterans Day event that had elementary school children as the primary audience. So that was a lot of fun, to be able to share, you know, kind of the legacy of service after veterans serve, and how they continue to serve their communities long after.
Thank you very much. Ms. Wood?
Well, Ms. Morrison talked about the groundbreaking ceremony, and that was a delightful time, and I think she covered it quite well, so that was it.
All right, thank you. Let's see, it's been a very busy month, and so I'm going to talk about a couple of things. Out of many, one tour at the George Bush Library and Museum, the Chancellor and I had an opportunity to go visit Carlos Rovelo, who is a professor, a government professor at TCC South, actually gave a tour. There he is, there at the event. So this particular eve, this particular afternoon, there's a book that has a collection of paintings of, from former President George Bush, and Carlos is one of the persons that's there on the cover, and there's a very nice picture of him. It's, of all pictures are of immigrants, and it's just beautifully done. He talked about his experience- He talked about his experience. He came here from El Salvador, became a U.S. citizen in 1987 after escaping civil war. And it was, it was a very moving afternoon to hear his story. And he has just done some remarkable things and we were just very impressed and very, it was just, I was so happy to be there with him, to celebrate him. And he was the only, was he the only community college, right, represented professor that was actually on this book? And so he talked about his experience meeting former President Bush. And he actually even was interviewed on CBS News. And so he's bringing, of course, highlighting immigration reform. That's part of what the message is. And then also he just is obviously promoting about being a U.S. citizen, what that journey has been for him. And he, of course, is a huge component of education and just talked about all the wonderful opportunities. He's actually been asked to serve now as a result of somebody taking one of his classes to serve on the George O'Keefe Museum Board of Directors. And so that's a very, very, it's very good that he's going to be representing not only himself, but he'll be representing TCC. And so we're very proud of him. So it was a really good opportunity for him and we were so happy. So let's see, there were several people there from, several presidents attended, several people from South Campus attended. It was, it was probably about, Dr. Giovinini, what do you think, about 25, 30 people? So very nicely done. So congratulations to Carlos. Let's see, Veterans Week. I also attended Veterans Day Ceremony at Northeast Campus. There we are with Dr. Ayers Pelmore and also, I'm sorry, what is his, the, his, Chief of Chris, Chris Hunt, yes. So they were, had a ceremony in the morning and that is, there is my father and myself went. And what they did was they sang the National Anthem, they did the Pledge of Allegiance, and they recognized several of the veterans there that are working at, at the campus. So I was happy to be there with my father. There's one of the medals that were presented to each one of the veterans. And my father is a World War II veteran. He served proudly in the U.S. Merchant Marines, so I was very happy to be there with him. And so thank you very much for your hospitality. And let's see, Dr. Morrison talked about the groundbreaking. Thank you very much. It was well-attended. And thank you and congratulations to everyone that was involved in the preparations. It was just a really marvelous celebration. And, you know, I remembered going there as a student and I'm just so excited for the students and the staff and the faculty that they'll be able to be in such a wonderful facility. And then, let's see, Arts Alive, just want to mention Arts Alive Celebration. There's going to be an evening celebration of art, music, drama, and dance at the Northwest Campus, 7:00 PM tomorrow. And so if you have an opportunity to go by there, also start, there's having one starting tonight. So for those of you that are listening in, we'd love for you to attend that as well. So that is my report. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add? Okay. Thank you. It's been a busy, busy, busy month, so thank you all. And you can see TCC is very involved in the community. That's one of our goals, the service to the community and meeting our students where they are and the one college. So we are, everyone is working very hard on that and we appreciate your efforts. So we will go into the agenda here. Item number four, consideration and approval of the consent agenda. Just for those of you that are watching and those of you that are new, some of these items may appear as though we're going through them rather quickly, but we have discussed them in detail at our work session last week. So a lot of the trustees have, we've looked at this and gone over it with a fine-toothed comb and if any other subsequent questions, they've been addressed. So anyone have any questions or comments about the item four? Consideration approval of the consent agenda? Okay.
I move approval.
Move approval from Dr. Morrison.
Second.
Second by Mr. Greenhill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. We'll go into item five. Let's see, that's consideration and approval of the individual action items. The first one is 5A, consideration approval of one-year contract with two one-year renewal options with Pitch Black LLC to provide resources to expand TCC's integrated marketing plan to reach additional audiences in the amount of $750,000, not to exceed annually. Mr. Reginald Gates.
Thank you, Madam President, trustees, and chancellor. This is the agenda item to launch the marketing efforts for the Corporate Solutions and Economic Development Departments, TCC Means Business Campaign. During last week's work session, it was recommended that we come back after six months of performance and provide an update. Earlier this week, we forwarded the key performance measures that we will update the board on in six months. They include the number of everyday entrepreneur venture fund applicants, the number of enrollments in the Coffee Talk Series, the number of enrollments in professional development opportunities that are offered to the corporations, the number of customized training proposals delivered to clients, the number of corporate, corporate center rentals at the facility at Alliance, the number of presentations given to the community stakeholders, including the corporate and philanthropic clients, and obviously the analytics on the marketing strategy that we place on the different events that will be supported.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gates. Any questions or comments?
I'm, I'm very pleased to see this happening and I move we approve.
Absolutely. I second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Barr and second by Mr. Greenhill. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. 5B, consideration and approval of purchase of hardware from Xerox Business Solutions Southwest Computer Discount Warehouse, NetSync GTS Technology Solutions, and SHI International Core for Faculty and Staff Mobility Refresh in the amount of $2,949,099. And we have Mr. Killingsworth.
Thank you, Madam President, trustees, and chancellor. As we discussed in work session last week, this is an opportunity to use her funds to get our faculty and staff back up to using our mobility platform to encourage the ability to be as mobile and as agile as we can in the current world that we're living in. We took bids with all of our vendors, chose the best options possible. So even though it's her funds, we're being as responsible as we can to optimize what we're doing to enable faculty and staff to be as effective as we can. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Killingsworth? I think that there was a question around mobile phones. Did that get addressed already with you? Do you?
So those are not covered in this?
Okay.
I don't know what the current specific policy is for mobile phones. This is purely computing technology and accessories that go with your computing technology, monitors, keyboards, mice, that kind of.
Okay. All right. Ms. Wood, did you have any other questions?
We just have covered us.
Okay. No worries. Okay. Thank you. That's fine. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay. Well, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
So moved by Dr. Morrison. Second by Mr. Hornsby. Okay. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We'll go into 5C, consideration approval of a contract with TD Industries for construction and installation services for the chiller replacement project at Southeast Campus in the amount of $643,877.50. Ms. Allenese?
Yes, so this is routine infrastructure, maintenance and replacement. The board approved the acquisition of the equipment back in August and this will cover the installation and construction costs associated with it.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Ms. Allenese or clarifications? I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Okay, from Dr. Morrison, we have a motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hornsby. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next, we have 5D, consideration and approval of amendment number two to the agreement for professional design services with Perkins and Will, Inc. to provide for an owners-controlled contingency fund in the amount of $770,000. Ms. Allenese?
Yes, typically in our construction projects or the design contracts, we have a 10% owners-controlled contingency to allow flexibility during the design process as, as changes become warranted and so on. We fail to include that in this particular contract. This is existing funding within the budget that was allocated. It just gives us the contract authority to manage it effectively.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Ms., or clarifications for Ms. Allenese?
I make motion to approve.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Greenhill.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. 5E, consideration and approval of contract with TD Industries for domestic hot water boiler replacement at Trinity River Campus in the amount of $258,222.30. Ms. Allenese?
So the original boilers that were in this campus when we bought it were replaced with temporary solutions a couple of years ago while we developed a broader solution to the needs of the campus. This provides that replacement and you get a gold star, Mr. Hornsby, for your eagle eye. The original two were actually not removed and demolished that were installed. The, the new equipment was installed around it. So we've got the original demo, the replacement demo, and the removal of three systems that will be replaced with the, the new equipment. So that's why the, the attachment referenced seven items. Yeah.
Great. Thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you.
Good job. Any other questions or comments for Ms. Allenese? Okay, we'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Mr. Hornsby?
Second.
Second by Mr. Greenhill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. 5F, consideration and approval of resolution approving the designation of investment officers at Tarrant County College District. Ms. Allenese?
Yes, so we, under our policy designate me as the chief investment officer for the college. The Public Funds Investment Act recommends that you, by resolution, memorialize the designation of some of the day-to-day administrative authority associated with that. You've been receiving reports from this team all along and so it's not a change in our practice. And one thing we did since last week, Dr. Morrison, you had requested that we make it a little bit more explicit, the part of the policy that includes me. And so we've, we've adjusted the document to reflect that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Move approval.
Move approval for Dr. Morrison and second by Mr. Barr. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. 5G, consideration and approval of contract to exchange a 9.0 acre tract at TCC Northwest Seattle location for two tracts totaling nine acres from Hillwood LLC and to authorize the chancellor to negotiate all of the documents necessary to effect the contract. Ms. Allenese?
Yes, so we mentioned to you last week that we would be adding this agenda item for this week. Hillwood approached us about swapping some land up adjacent to the Seattle campus to give them some access for a potential client adjacent to the runway. It gives us property that's closer to I-35, which is good visibility for us and serves our purpose as long-term as that campus develops. We are getting more than our fair market value out of the deal as described. The other thing that they requested is that they be allowed to use a portion of the property that the college will retain for a drainage facility. And so we will have agreements associated with that and it will be constructed at their expense to also accommodate the drainage needs for the college when that property is, is developed to its fullest extent. Couple of things, Carol has distributed revised contract that just has a few minor clarifications that she's been working on with her lawyer. By approving this, you're approving substantially the form of the contract that was attached, but you're authorizing the chancellor to finalize all the remaining documents. As you can imagine, the stack of documents that comes with a closing like this. The other thing I'll mention is that we had included the, a reference to an exhibit that was going to be from their engineer to memorialize that the capacity that they are designing to for the detention pond would fulfill our future needs. We have not received that document from them yet and so there's just, just a placeholder here. However, we'll make sure that it's memorialized as part of this so that future generations of staff can, can, can figure out what happened when, when we developed that property. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments or clarifications?
Move approval.
Okay, Dr. Morrison, we have a motion from Dr. Morrison.
Second.
A sec, a second from Mr. Kine. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And thank you for all the information that you provided relative to this. It's been very helpful. Thank you. Okay, let's see, Ms. Allenese, let's pull up a chair. All right, monthly financial report?
Yes, so in, in your packet, you've received the monthly financial report and we just completed the second month of the fiscal year. And you can see that we've received about 12.7% of our budgeted income and spent nearly 20% through either expenditures or encumbrances of, of our budget. The only notable thing that I'll mention to you is that we are about $6 million less in tuition funds at this point than we were at this point last year. And so that's something we'll continue to monitor. As you know, we've got a myriad of start dates of terms and so on. And so that's a little bit of a fluid thing through the, through the, through the fall and the spring. And so we'll, we'll keep you apprised of how that continues to develop. The other thing I'll note, and I think we talked about this last month, is that we have audit committee scheduled in December for you to receive the sort of, the CAFR draft as well. And then the board will be able to see how we closed out last fiscal year at their, their December meeting, your December meeting, we should say. Okay, and then our investment recap. Again, our yield is, is still pretty remarkably low. We've continued to work on putting the, the pieces in place for us to have a more actively managed portfolio that is nearing fruition. So be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Allenese?
Thank you.
Thank you. I have here minerals account performance.
Yes, so that, that's just a written report that we include from the foundation each month and you've got that in your packet.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Okay, chancellor's report, Dr. Giovinini.
Thank you, Ms. Allenese. We have a briefing today as, as one of the items that had been previously requested by board of trustees on educational partnerships. And that presentation will be given by Dr. Capola and Dr. LeBlanc.
Good evening, trustees and chancellor. It's a privilege for me to present with my good partner over here. We gave you a presentation, I guess it's been a year now, on our educational partnerships and a lot has happened since then. Are you moving the slides? Okay, so real quickly, the, as you well know, the benefits of these partnerships are many for our students. But of course, it supports the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board 60 by 30 Strategic Plan, which is to increase the number of students that attend college and complete college. It also prepares our future workforce. It establishes a college-going culture at the public schools. It prepares students for transfer. And so you'll be hearing a little bit about each. And Dr. Capola will start the presentation by talking about the dual credit partnerships and other important endeavors that were encountered.
Madam President, chancellor, members of the board, it has been a while since I've presented to you and it's a pleasure to be here. You mentioned before, Ms. Aliel, about how involved we are in our community. But what's really important is the relationships that we have had over time. And I'll let you change the slides. So by forming meaningful relationships with our educational partners, Tarrant County College can make an intentional impact on closing the gap in the continuum of education from the K-12 to the baccalaureate, where we are in a unique position to move the pendulum to increase the educational attainment of our county. Next, please. We have really grown in this area of partnerships with our ISDs, with dual credit, early college, high school, NRP techs, and I'll talk a little bit about it in a minute. Right now, we work with 18 ISDs with 69 different high schools, but we have 21 early college high schools, which is an incredible amount for an institution our size. We have, we started one, the first one was at Marine Creek, if you remember. But we also now have 7 P techs, mostly within Fort Worth ISD. But this is just one part of the story. We also have, are working with our private schools and our charter schools. When people think of the work we're doing with dual credit, they always really go right back to the ISDs. And we also have two STEM schools that are started in Fort Worth ISD. Another population that we also make a big impact on is our large homeschool population, where students will come to us as early as 13 years old to use our science labs and take classes with us for a dual credit. where students will come to us as early as thirteen years old to use our science labs and take classes with us as part of dual credit. One of the fastest-growing areas that has started, uh, a few years ago, really in New York, are the P-tex, as I mentioned, which are pathways in technology. What's important here is that within six years with P-tex enables students to earn a high school diploma, an associate's degree, a two-year post-secondary certificate, or an industry certification. And that industry certification is really the important one here, as well as completing work-based training. We, we know by reports that seventy percent of all new positions, particularly post-pandemic, will require some type of post-secondary degree or certificate. The P-tex help meet this need by awarding a credential in a specific field upon graduation. In addition, on the ISD side, it also helps with your CCMR, College Career Military Ratingness Reporting in two of the categories, college readiness and career readiness. So the P-tech, a unique aspect of the P-tech is that the requirement for all ISDs to have an industry partner, which must sign on with the ISD and with the P-tech, for each pathway that they do. This is a list of the partners that are presently connected to a P-tech or a CT program. You can see that just about everyone in Fort Worth and Tarrant County want to be attached to us. Something you have heard about is Tarrant Two and Through. I know it says through and through on your paper, just ignore that, okay? We had a little typo. Um, but Tarrant Two and Through, a T-three, was something that has started really three years ago in the making. Dr. Juvenini, uh, has came here with an idea that every student that leaves high school should be college-ready. And by doing that, T-three is one of the aspects that is going through this city. At present, T-three is partnering with Fort Worth ISD and six area universities, including, uh, TCC. And the impact of it is really to increase the number of high school graduates, college admissions, and trained workforce. Everything we do with our ISD partners as far as early college high schools, P-tex partnerships, the first priority is to have a high school graduation out of those students, then the colleges are perks coming afterwards. This is a really, uh, information that is right off the presses. We, this is our first cohort just started this fall. And there was a total of, out of all the industry, all the students through T-three, nine hundred and forty-eight total students, and TCC received fifty-five percent of those students, or five hundred and twenty-one. Those are the scholars in the first cohort. Two important numbers here that, to pay attention to. First is the percent that are attending full-time. We do, this is a, really was one that really didn't shock me, but I was real surprised to see. Forty-two percent of the students are taking at least nine hours, uh, where most of our students that are working or that comes to us, uh, take usually three to six. So this is a great number. The other is the, the large percentage of the Hispanic and Latino students. Seventy-four percent of the population, which really ties in with the work that Dr. LeBlanc is doing with Title V. And so this is being used as a cohort within that. Of course, we still got that sixty-third, sixty-forty to split between, um, male and female, and this is something that we, we're going to be working on and trying to get more mentors for male students in high school to take that college-level path. So at the district level, when the students came to us, they have to select, um, you know, what their endorsement is, but more importantly, what do they want to study? Of course, the most popular interest selected by the students is in the health sciences. That is the reason why Trinity River Campus got two hundred and twenty-eight of the scholars there. Also, what is encouraging is that fifty-six percent of the students are intending to earn an associate's degree rather than taking just one semester and transferring on to us. The twenty-two percent TSI met, um, one of the reasons why you kind of say, well, why is that number so low? Well, we really started this in February, and with COVID, we weren't able to give the, we weren't able to identify the students and get them on the TSI track. But they have gone through a summer bridge program, and now we'll be going through to get the TSI complete. Later on, uh, not, not too far later, but pretty soon, uh, Dr. LeBlanc will be talking about data, and the data is really going to show the success of our partnerships with our early college high school and dual-credit students. The reason for that is, and a lot of, um, individuals from around the country want to know why our success rates are so high, and they are high. We, in early college high schools, we'll have eighty-six to ninety percent success rates. It's because we treat the students in these dual-credit programs and the early college high schools just the same way we do the sort of wraparound services on our own campuses. A lot of that has come out of also from the ISSM, um, principal work, which has shown how students need the support. So when the students are getting, with our faculty being teaching the dual-credit classes, we are also bringing, especially with the early college high schools, our library staff, our supplemental instructors, our tutors, usually on a Friday, to those schools in order to help support those students. We don't just teach the class and leave them on your lawn. So just a couple of recognitions and accomplishments is that, first of all, the one big in Fort Worth ISD has an eighty-four percent of the early college high schools through P-tex finish with an associate's degree. That is an amazing number, that students could finish with a two-year degree. What's also is these students, the students that attend an early college high school are first-generation, low socio-economic students, and students who really didn't even think about finishing high school, let alone finishing high school, I mean, finishing college, let alone finishing high school. All of these, now I'm saying, many of these students get scholarships in the millions of dollars, uh, not per student, about three-point-one million was with Arlington, that would be a pretty good deal if they did that. Um, but they got the scholarships, go on, and they're going to schools like Princeton, um, MIT, Northwest University, um, around the country as well as those here, wherever you saw it after. I want to tell you about two stories as you read through the slide. One was at our play, Almost Maine, that was on our campus, um, and you saw the, the picture in our award-winning collegiate. This picture, this young lady that is on the cover here, um, was one of the lead actresses, was actually an early college high school senior. After the show, the faculty member came up to me, she had literally had tears in her eyes, just because she saw all three shows, said that this student would never have this opportunity if she was in her homeschool. And this is what, she never would have made this available to her in her life. And in her freshman year at the early college high school, she said, I want to get involved with as many things as possible. So we bring those students, all of us doing all five of our campuses, bring those students on our campuses and encourage them to be involved. You could change the next slide, please. Also, what was even more impressive, we had our Phi Theta Kappa, um, induction this week, and the president of Beta Delta Omicron, uh, for the Southeast PTK Chapter, which is a two-year National Honor Society, is also an early college high school student from Arlington Collegiate High School. Her father was an individual who decided to go back to college, he was in the audience, uh, later in life. He received his associate's degree from TCC, and he was also a PTK alumni, and is now in A&amp;M in law school, and encourages her to go to school. At the induction, proudly wearing his TCC alumni pin up there, um, what we were seeing here is a generation change in our communities because of the partnership TC has with its, our secondary educational partners, a really strong impact. And with that, I think I turn it back to Dr. LeBlanc. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Coppola. As you can see, the student outcomes are so amazing that it's easy to be passionate about this. It is important, as we review the data with you, I, I won't bore you, but I will give you some highlights, is that, um, the dual-credit students and the early college students are very different populations. The, the dual-credit students already know they're going to continue and finish a bachelor degree, that's their ultimate goal. And so you will note that as we look at the data, the early college high school students, as Dr. Coppola mentioned, um, the criteria to be accepted is that they be the first in their family to attend college, ESL. Often, they're in, uh, low income, and in some cases, they're, uh, individuals that maybe at the high school didn't make very good decisions for themselves, but then they're moved to the college setting where they're with adults, and they start behaving differently and, and more adult-like. So those are important variables to keep in mind as we go through this information. Next slide, free, please? So the dual-credit students, um, continued growth and success is, is something to celebrate. We had a slight dip in, uh, in our enrollments during COVID. That's been a huge challenge for all of us on every level. However, it's building up yet again. Historically, the core success rate for individuals taking the dual-credit student, uh, dual-credit courses is ninety percent. And again, when you talk about dual-credit, these are students that are taking a course, and they will get credit at the college and credit at the high school for that course toward high school graduation. Hold on, yes, that's right. The, uh, success rate at TCC after dual-credit is also impressive. So you will note that, um, if the student continues immediately in taking a, um, college-level courses toward a degree immediately after they finish high school and the dual-credit programs, they're going to do much better than the, than those that wait longer, right? So the farther removed they are, the, the, the less impressive, but still, even, uh, three years after they've taken the last dual-credit course, they're seventy-six percent success rate. So that's, that's really very good. Um, as, as I stated, their goal is to continue, uh, at, at the four-year insti, is to continue and earn their bachelor degree. And you will note that it takes them a little bit longer for some, but ultimately, within four years, about seventy-four percent of those dual-credit students do get their bachelor. So continuing to four-year institutions, we have ten, uh, the top ten universities where most of the dual-credit students will go to. Uh, University of Texas at Arlington ha, gets most of our students that are in dual-credit. But, um, you also have University of North Texas, Texas A&amp;M, and, uh, Mr. Greenhill, you'll be happy to see University of Texas at Austin. Yes, um, that's a tough school to get into, and they, they managed to get in there. So, uh, that's also a, a happy story. Next, please. So we also identified the top ten majors. About twenty percent of the dual-credit students attending four-year school, the first fall term after their last dual-credit term had one of these majors. And you can see again, these correlate with the T-three students and the interests that they have in the nursing and the health professions and such as that. So, um, again, uh, there's been consistency in the top courses that they prefer. So bachelor degree in, in six years, so, um, about fifty-five percent of these students will earn a bachelor degree. Uh, and in many cases, they continue, uh, when they're, when they haven't finished. These people often work, go to school, try to do a million things before they figure out what it is they want to do when they grow up, and then they, they finish ultimately. Early college high school students, as I mentioned before, are a different population, and in many cases, these are students that might not have even thought about college as being a possibility. Many of them, uh, really don't have a clue as to what it means to be a college student, and it's been an incredibly successful story. So we've grown from two thousand one hundred and twenty-two students in 2017 to three thousand three hundred and fifty-four students in 2021. And again, their success rate is a little bit lower than the dual-credit students, but still very impressive. When you look at what are the ultimate results, a hundred percent of the students in the early college high school will earn, uh, their high school diploma. And eighty-five percent of the early college high school students earn an associate degree before they get their high school diploma. When you compare it to students at other colleges, which is the lower percentage, the forty percent is about what, uh, early college high school students achieve at other post-secondary institutions. Ours are really amazing, and I have to credit the efforts of the faculty and our staff. Dr. Coppola talked about the wraparound services and, and other steps that we take to help the students. The faculty have been quite amazing, and it's true, a true partnership because it's Tarrant County College faculty and public school faculty working in concert. So the success is even bigger than this, but we're focusing on our students today. So, um, again, the early college high school students, uh, do extremely well. Some of them, um, the few that don't earn their associate degree while they're in early college high school, they will come back and finish it because they may re, they may be missing three course, uh, I don't know, three hours, six hours. They come back and they, and they finish. And as Dr. Coppola stated, many of them, uh, move on to, uh, universities. The universities want them because our faculty have prepared them well to be, um, excellent college students. They learn how to study, they learn how to be advocates for themselves, and they learn to make more mature decisions, and that is through the extra efforts of our, of our faculty. I have to give them credit for that. So as, much like the dual-credit, our early college high school students tend to go to, uh, UTA and UNT, and you can see that the top five majors are similar to what we've described earlier. Now, um, I talked a little bit about our partnership with the public schools is critical. We do a lot of crosswalks so that the pathways are there, and the students can make an easy transition from the high school to us. We are also creating articulation agreements with our university partners, and, um, I have Gaston White here to make sure that I'm not making up anything, right? Gaston is Mick, is, is keeping an eye on me so that I don't make some, something up. But the dual-admission partnerships that we've developed in recent years have been extremely beneficial to our students. We started out with UTA. UTA gets a very high percentage of our students, and they were very motivated to work with us. And then that was followed by Tarleton and Texas Wesleyan. We have other universities that are interested in the dual-admission partnership because it benefits the students, it benefits everyone. So what do these mean? The, the current dual-admissions partnership means we have data-sharing agreements so that we don't have to be challenged with the FERPA rules and et cetera. And, um, it means that our students ha, make an, a more easy transition to that institution. So these are transfer programs designed for TCC students who have the ultimate goal of obtaining a bachelor degree from the university. It allows university to create, uh, an application for TCC students, and it makes it easier for them to apply. They evaluate their credits even before they get any transcripts from the, the, um, Tarrant County College because of the du, uh, data-sharing agreement. They also invite the students to come to their campus, and they get to participate. They're, they have access to all the student activities that are there at the university. And in the case of UTA, they're guaranteed, uh, tuition. So when they sign up for the TCC UTA partnership, pathways partnership, they're guaranteed the tuition, uh, the day and year in which they sign up. So that if the tuition goes up, they're going to pay the tuition at the point that they signed up. And that's, we're trying to encourage the other universities to consider that model, aren't we, Gaston? Yes. We have partnerships in, uh, in addition to UTA, UNT, Tarleton, uh, Texas Wesleyan. You can see that we have partnerships throughout the region. And all of them, again, keep their articulation agreements up to date because they want our students. I do want to highlight a few items. On college, Collin College, Collin College, we have a very nice articulation agreement for cybersecurity and nursing. They now offer a bachelor degree in those two fields, and so they accept all of our credits, and, uh, the students can finish in less time. And so they accept all of our credits and uh the students can finish in less time. Uh Midwestern State University, uh as another example, we have radiologic, health science, and respiratory care. Again, they accept all of our credits, so the students take less time to finish. And I can go down down that list of how we negotiate with those universities for them to accept our credits so the students spend less time uh completing their degrees, which is ultimately in line with the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board Strategic Plan. And then we also have out-of-state partners and those are increasing. They especially those that have online programs, they like to recruit from this region because it uh gives students uh options and uh they, again, are very prepared. Uh one example I'd like to give is the University of Phoenix. We have what they call three plus one partnership. They uh accept three years, the students would take three years at T C C and one year at the University of Phoenix and complete their bachelor degree. And it's about seventeen programs where we have worked through that with the University of Phoenix as one example. And then um Gaston is quite amazing. We had um everything on um paper and he's put put everything on the web. And he has created web pages that show the students uh benefits uh for signing up early on some of these um pathways and articulation agreements. And you can see if an institution is offering them a reduced tuition or if there's a scholarship or if there's an application fee waiver or whatever, they can learn about that as they click on to the universities. And then for for the um Tarrant County College employees, he's also created these wonderful articulation dashboards that are up to date uh and can inform the advisors, counselors, and others uh as to where we are on the articulation agreement. When we have these conversations with the universities, it does involve our faculty, our deans, our vice our vice presidents for academic affairs, and our presidents. And each, at each level, we have different conversations. And so again, it's labor intensive, but it's all for our uh for our students. And so finally, um our education partnerships allow students seamless transitions from high school to Tarrant County College to universities. And and truly, our faculty prepare them well. They not only teach them subject matter, but also how to become responsible adults and how to be successful in college. And as mentioned earlier, it takes um a a team of people to uh lead these conversations. Dr. Coppola has has done an exceptional job, is a good example of how the presidents connect with the university partners as well as the public school partners. And we're both here, ready to answer any questions that you may have.
Excellent presentation. Go ahead, Mr. Kline.
Well, first, I would love to echo that. This has been really good information, so thank you for presenting all of this. Um I have a couple of comments and then I have a group of questions around P Tecs, if that's okay. My first comment or request really is, can we make sure that we as trustees receive invitations to attend the early college high school graduations?
They graduate with us.
Yes, so I love love to be able to do that as a new trustee who hasn't.
So I th- that is, it almost brings tears to your eyes.
Yeah.
Because um their whole families. And as as Dr. Coppola mentioned, sometimes it motivates the uh parents to come to school. And then their siblings come to school. So it's not unusual for a whole family to be seen in the library as an example as a result of that one little step that we took for the early college high school student.
We had a a Mayor Ross took a visit of Arlington Colisha High School, Dr. Cavazos and I. And in every classroom, he asked the students, how many of you had an older brother or sister that went here? Every room, there was at least two or three hands that raised up. So we're breaking that cycle by getting more students instead of examples. Because every time we talk to the early college high school students, we tell them, you're an example for a lot of people. And they take that very seriously because they know they're stepping outside their comfort zones and that they have to be there in order for for others to succeed and bring their family up to a better place.
I I haven't even met them and I'm already so proud of them.
Come on over.
My other statement was, I think it was Dr. Morrison at last month's board meeting showed a picture of the Marine Creek Group who had recently um competed in some U I L competitions and earned their Letterman's Jackets. I wondered if at a subsequent update, we could learn a little bit more about the I hesitate at calling it fully co-curricular activities, but the other opportunities that our early college high school students are able to participate in. Because I just think that that was such a um visual depiction of, you know, the real high school experience. And certainly some enrichment opportunities that that perhaps students who operate under a rigorous program like this may miss out on unless we're we're looking at that closely.
Yes.
Um and then my questions around P Tecs. How would a new company or a new industry partner with the P tech opportunities associated with Tarrant County College?
They're associated with the I S D.
Okay.
The I S D is with both early college high schools and P techs are T E A programs with a blueprint. I S Ds then partner with us. The business and industries partner with the P techs that are with the high schools. We then support those that business and industry through the certification and the programming that we have.
Okay.
But yeah, go ahead, you can.
No, no, he's he's correct about the the P tech. We do have other ways in which we connect with business and industry through our advisory committees in the technical programs. In addition to that, we're talking to junior achievement folks and mention and looking at the career pathways. And of course, they start with students when they're in the fifth and sixth grade. So we we feel like we're really successful, but we still have a lot of fun to go, uh more work to do in working with fifth, sixth, seventh graders, even before the high school level.
But the industry would partner with us as we try to work with high school students to offer credentials, not just through P techs, but through C T E programs at dual credit. Um the coordinating board and T E A allowed, the legislation al- also allowed C T E courses now to offer be high school before. Whereas before, C T E was on the continuing side, then we would have to transfer the credit over. So there's a lot of paths for business and industry to work with us.
So you, last question about P techs. You you make a great point that it's the I S Ds that are driving that. But do you have a sense of what the future of P techs and the partnerships between the I S Ds in Tarrant County College might look like in the future?
I have a lot of ideas, but we're on camera. We're gonna go to closed session and talk about that. If you really want, well, what's happening with a lot of students are leaving college with, they might have the skills, but we're calling it through our high school principal, cu- um uh career readiness two point oh, which is now it's the um the the skills beyond the technical skills, okay? It's the essential skills. Um that's what employers are asking for. We see panel after panel where they're saying, we need someone who understands this, and a lot of times that's left. We also are looking at possibly offering some type of credentials to students in their senior years in high school with partners so they can go ahead and get employment. But you know, right now, when a student looks for a job, the employer more than likely will look them up online. And that could be on LinkedIn, that could be on Facebook, they don't just take that piece of paper. And there's a lot that a paper resume that they can tell the faculty at the on the employer about that's not in a resume or it's not in their high school transcript, and we're trying to lead in that area.
Somebody else have questions, comments?
I echo all of the rest of the board and the president. This was a wonderful presentation. It gives me a lot of different information of pockets that I can talk to people about because early high school dual enrollment, that is so important. The money that you can save on your entire college education becomes really important. With our um out-of-state partners, do they do they allow them to not have pay out-of-state tuition because they we have a partnership with them?
It it depends on on the university and Gaston, can you answer that one?
Yeah, it it's gonna depend.
You have to come up. Because, yes.
So with that, it's gonna depend on each university. Some of the online out-of-state universities is char- charge a flat fee. So with them, there is no distinction. But other partners, um it is gonna be higher, but some of them even offer discounts on that out-of-state tuition that we highlight in the uh student benefits page.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
My observation is we should take both of you on the road. Really, I mean.
It's incredible.
One of the um one of the programs, just to follow up on something Dr. LeBlanc talked about with the transfer. With the early college high schools, um everyone wants those students. And U T A really stepped up and said, we want to get these students to transfer. And so what they did is they put an incentive in. If the students finish their associate's degree in their junior year, which about half the students would do it because they're very aggressive going over the summer, they can then take their senior year at U T A, start their baccalaureate degree, and then finish their baccalaureate degree one year after high school. And there were forty-one students in the first class. And that now has also gotten to Texas Wesleyan. That's with all the early college high schools, not just, but it started there.
Take you on the road.
Yeah, it's 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 amazing. And we actually, and you saw the story that was in the um Reach Magazine that the first graduating class, a young lady won't finish in three years her baccalaureate degree at U N T, uh came back, is now is a full-time faculty member at the early college high school that gave her the opportunity in order to change her life. That's that's what we do. I felt real excited. I'm sorry, I get excited about this.
No, that's great. Do you have anything further you wanted, any other comments or questions? This was fantastic and I.
We're gonna take them to uh Washington for an A C C T conference or a C A T T conference.
That's right. That's exactly right. I I do have a couple of questions. First, that was a that was so informative. And I agree, goodness, we need to take you on the road. Uh I am, that was one gonna be one of my questions. How are we communicating all of this information to to the community? Because this is this is fant- this is very impressive. And I think it's it's really tells a lot about the story of what we're doing here and how we're collaborating in such ways that are just so impactful. So how how do we communicate this to the to the broader community, Dr. LeBlanc?
Well, we can always uh do better, right? We we tell the story to anybody that has more than five minutes. But I I think the the best storytellers are the graduates of these programs. And they're the best ambassadors for all of us. With that said, we depend heavily on our public school partners. And we do meet with parents and we, and in fact, you talked about the program. You know, if if a a student is interested, for example, in sports and wanting to play football and such, they may not be interested in early college high school. And we have those conversations early on with the parents and the students. And we have multiple meetings with the parents. I think that's another layer of um steps that we take which increase the success rate of the students in these programs, is that we make it a family affair. And we include everyone in the conversation about what is expected and and communicate with them. But we certainly uh look for other opportunities. We also, you know, meet with the superintendents, the principals. We meet with all of our different stakeholders.
That's great. Uh I, oh, go ahead. Okay, I do have a follow-up to your question, Dr. LeBlanc. When you talked about, you know, the the wraparound services that we provide to these students and we bring the family in and and make it, I I think that's that's part of, that really is a component of the success of the program. So you talked about the dual admission partnerships and then there's, you know, there's uh dual admission and how that happens. So there's somewhat like of a handoff, right, when they hand off? So how do we arti- you know, to communicate that these are the types of services these students need in order to be successful? Or do does it even go beyond into that type of conversation? Because, you know, a lot of them may have some specific needs and I just wondered if we if we communicate that to the universities and that continues, that wraparound type support continues.
So the the communication that takes place is when we when we meet with them and the exchanges between the deans and, you know, the faculty and the instructional leaders as to what works for them and et cetera. It's, again, the partnerships are amazing for our students, but they're also amazing for our faculty. You have in the public schools, the public school faculty and our faculty exchanging information. In the universities, you have the our faculty and the universities exchanging information. So it's just, we're just adding to the learning community, if you will.
Right, no, that's fantastic. And I think my final question really is around, how how are we doing as a state as far as the sixty by thirty? Do we know what that number looks like right now? Are we close or we?
I couldn't, I can guess by the number, but.
We will need to get back to you on that.
I'm just curious.
Do you mean where do we stand in in rank by the state?
Right now, we're we're as a state, I know sixty percent, are we at fifty-eight percent, are we at fifty-nine percent?
I'll need to find out.
Just curious where we are with that. Because I remembered the, you know, when it when it was being discussed and I I thought, gosh, it seemed rather aggressive. But it's showing here, the work that we're doing is just making, we're making such strides. And and ultimately, it's fantastic for these students, it's fantastic for the families, it's fantastic for the community, economic development, everything. And and for someone that has a high school student, I'm sitting here thinking, goodness, the money savings for, you know, for for our parents.
And sixty-five thirties ages twenty-four and up, is a range, and they're twenty-four to twenty-seven, I think it is. Um so these students are coming out with their credential at eighteen.
That's fantastic.
So it's like.
Congratulations, this is wonderful. Thank you. I think Mr. Barr had a question as well.
This falls in the category, in my opinion, of some of the community's best kept secrets. Uh I've I've sort of long been frustrated that T C C does so much to impact Tarrant County and the people that live here. And an awful lot of people don't know that. This is a remarkable, the these are remarkable remarkable life-changing strategies that are being implemented. I would urge you to consider, you you mentioned you talked to the superintendents and people in the administration. I'd suggest you ought to consider asking for the opportunity to talk to the school boards themselves and make a presentation like this. I think more people need to know what's going on. And and they want their students to be successful. We're helping them make their students be successful.
Yes.
And it's a great, great stories and and we need to be, we need to be telling these stories. Get on the road.
Yeah, I I think that's.
That's what I think, yeah.
We're too busy, no, no. But one of the reasons why it is successful here is because the board over the years has given us the resources in order to reach out to the I S Ds. Um you know, it's it and and we want to thank you for that. You've always said, every time we've come, you've always said yes, so.
It's good work.
Absolutely.
Do you all have the opportunity to speak with the counselors, maybe at the junior high level or from the school? Excuse me?
The staff would, not, but we don't, no.
Well, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
But we need.
See, if you talk to the principal, they may not pass that information along.
We hear you and and in fact, you know, you do start with the superintendent and then the principal. And then you go to the counselors and those that are coordinating the courses and et cetera. And we we do understand the importance of including the counselors, the high school counselors. We also, one piece that we didn't include in this presentation, we do offer advisement for the dual credit students here at Tarrant County College. So um we we're doing a lot of extra things that we just do it and we probably should have put it in the all the uh and on the wraparound, next next presentation, right?
PTA's might be another good place.
That's right.
PTO's, PTA's.
This was excellent, thank you. Congratulations to everyone involved. I know this is a huge collaboration. I appreciate all the vision. This is fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well done, yes.
Thank you, Bill, thank you, Alma. A few notable accolades this month is that the, the college has been a leadership school with the National Coalition of Certification Centers, NC3. You might have heard of, mentioned that before. For the last four years and since January of 17, we have issued 26, 2,2641 certificates in a variety of automotive areas. The significance of that is we are currently ranked eighth out of 1,200 members in the nation in the number of certificates issued since 2017. And this year, we are already issued 820 certs, on track for another 175. So it's quite a, quite an accomplishment, recognition, not just for the program itself, but that NC3 certification is, really puts a stamp of, of excellence on the work that's being done here, particularly in the automotive area. The college was nominated and received a high honor, only two in the entire country, from the National Association for Behavioral Intervention and Threat Assessment. And that was done on behalf of our Student Emergency Assistant Fund Program. So the, the association itself is nationally recognized, really as the professional association that is standard, that is the standard bearer for training, education, and policy development related to behavioral support within educational environments. So this award is really intended to recognize a best practice that can be modeled by other institutions as a practice and has been shown as significant evidence-based and impact on the, on, on the institution itself. So we're very proud of the, of that program and that it's of national recognition. I was able to accept that award virtually in the national conference earlier this week. Also, earlier this week, the college's PR and marketing team received notification that it had won three educational digital marketing awards. A competition that has received more than 1,000 entries from colleges, universities, and secondary schools across the country. So the TCC was awarded a, a two-golds award and a silver for a digital publication in the Reach Magazine, digital publication, tw, two-golds for the Reach Magazine, and then a Microsite of the Fall 2021, Guide to the Fall of 2021. The, the team achieved three Markcom Awards, two platinum and one gold in all three categories in which we were entered. The, the platinum for the, the, this is college series that was campaigned, it was on television. A platinum as well as for the Take Me or Save Me article placement in the Dallas Morning News, and a gold for print media as it relates to the Reach Magazine. Markcom Awards are administered and judged by the Association of Marketing and Communication Professionals. Judges are industry professionals who look for companies and individuals whose talents exceed a high standard of excellence and whose work serves as a benchmark for the industry. There were more than 6,000 entries from 41 countries in this year's Markcom Awards competition. So again, standing out among many, many in, in that particular field. Lastly, I'd like to mention that the American Institute of Architects in Fort Worth held their annual Excellence in Architectural Design Award. And I'm pleased to say that we were one of eight projects selected, and our project specifically is right where you sit. Tarrant County College District Office Relocation with Bennett Partners as the architect for that. And so the, the work that was done here in the relocation, you've seen the offices in here, have been recognized regionally for that work. So a number of, of very nice accolades this month, those are just a few that really stood out as, as, as probably quite significant. You have at your place 7D, and it speaks to an enrollment update, and I'd like to walk through that with you. So the first slide you've seen before, I included this in my goals report. And it speaks to the snapshot of students enrolled on September 8th of this year. And they call that the census date. And it includes all students enrolled for the terms that start, that began, and then subsequently throughout the semester. And you've seen this before, and I just highlighted the last three years. This is the number I shared with you at the, at the, in my goals report. So what I want to do then is take you to the next slide and hold that other one right next to you as well. You see in 2021, on the first, 2122, on the first slide I gave you showed 40,562. That's the census date number. So that's a particular date. In this case, it was September 8th. However, we keep enrolling students throughout the semester. And as you can see in the last three years, how that has transpired. This year, we've enrolled 702 students after the census date, September 8th. So currently, the enrollment, that is of today, November 18th, 41,264. So this takes into account all those students that enrolled after the census date as well. This is the most accurate depiction of enrollment at the college, okay? And so uh, the, the, the data for that is we have a couple dashboards, dashboards that you could go to anytime and see this data. So if you click on the Fall of '21 dashboard, and so you can check me here online, that I just shared with you, that 41264 number. So you can see that through our dashboard at any time that you wish. And you can see that, again, where that came from as it relates to the additional students being enrolled this past, since the census data, since the census date. So if that makes some sense. The last thing I would like to, oh, I'm sorry, let's go to the spring one, to show you what spring looks like right now. And you can go to this at any time. So spring right now, day-to-day, last year was 22,674 and today we're at 22,236, date-to-date, okay? And that's spring. And again, that continues to move every day, all right? So again, accessible to you and the public. The last slide that I want to take you to really references, I want to reference back to the article that perhaps you saw a couple weeks ago. The coordinating board reports a census date number on September 8th, just like we did. But what's critical to this is the number, those referenced in the article, does not include students enrolled after this date. It is that date and that date only, okay? And so as you can see, September 8th to 21, again, we had 40,562. Those did include the students enrolled after the census date. And then at the very bottom today, on November 18th, again, we're at 41264, all right? So what I want to reference here on the right-hand side, we have a lot of different sessions. So we enroll many students after that census date. Coordinating board doesn't capture that, and that was the number that was reported, minus that. This coordinate, I want to get into it because it's quite involved, but the coordinating board will catch up and that will be reported in the spring, but through that. So I would, just wanted to clarify, you know, what, what enrollment really is, if you will, at, at this point. I'll be happy to take any questions on that.
Thank you for this information. Is there a, a census date for the spring as well?
Yes.
Okay. So that 22,000 course could fluctuate. So what, do we know what the date, the date is for the census date for the spring? Just curious.
Uh, well, it'll be about three weeks after the semester begins.
Okay.
So we begin on the 22nd of January, so three weeks after that. So early February, we'll have the census date.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Go ahead.
Sure. Lastly, in our October board retreat, some of, we talked about, and asked for a presentation related to faculty and the placement, as well as processes around promotion, rank, and tenure. And this is to let you know that we're planning on that presentation and we'll provide that for you in the January board meeting. That's all I have.
Miss Alma.
Want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving to the entire college community.
I just had a quick question. I know that we talked about the enrollment and I know that we talked about it was going back up. Were there a couple of things that, that were being done to increase the enrollment?
Well, I should say, we're, we're still down, okay? And so the, the trend has not, has not changed. As I shared with you at the board retreat and in the phone calls I had with you, and each of you individually a week or so ago, there's strategies that are being put in place to really look at both strategically, big picture, as well as tactically. And so I can certainly share more specific in, in the future of what those things are.
Thank you.
Thank you for that question. Any other questions? I just want to make sure that everyone knows that we wish you a very happy Thanksgiving. Thank each and every one of you for all of your support throughout this past year. It's been fantastic. We, I always say that really one of our strongest resources is our, our staff and faculty and the people, so thank each and every one of you. And anyone else have anything? Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion. Did you have something, Dr. Morrison?
Yes.
Yes.
Do we have December board meetings?
Yes, we do have December board meetings.
Someone asked me, I wanted them to hear it from you, too.
I believe Mr. Gates has already sent out some general information about upcoming dates for, okay. Right, okay. Entertain a motion to adjourn. So move for Mr. Barr.
Second.
Second for Mr. Hornsby. Y'all have a great evening. Thank you.
Glory!
Thank you.